Well, it is Thursday night and so it's time for us to start our final session of this Lenten Bible study. I hope you all have enjoyed this study. I definitely have. It seems like it's gone kinda fast. We started our journey to Jerusalem the Thursday after Ash Wednesday. And here we are, my goodness, the Thursday before Palm Sunday. Time does have a way of passing very quickly. I wanted to give you just a little bit of preview of what's coming up. Saturday, we have our Easter egg hunt. A group of people got together last week and put the eggs together that had not been filled with candy and we had 5,000 eggs when we got finished. So, or when they got finished. It was an awesome group. So, we're ready for lots of folks. It's gonna be a little nippy on Saturday morning, but it's, the egg hunt is at 11:00. So, by then, hopefully, things will be warmed up. Hope we have a lot of kids there, ready to to hunt eggs and to play games and to get their pictures taken with the Easter bunny. We will, uh, next week, of course, is Holy Week. We handed out food last night. Oh, I tell you, the weather was so threatening. There was a tornado watchout and we started out at quarter to five and uh, sky was almost clear. The sun was out bright and and uh, people came early because they were afraid that it was gonna get bad. And then it was forecasted that we'd have a, some really bad thunderstorms. But we, we served 396 meals last night and that went really, really well. Uh, we were finished before it, uh, the clouds came in and uh, we were finished before it even started sprinkling. So, uh, that went extremely well. And we will take a break from giving out uh, the meals next week because of spring break. And then we'll start back the following week. Next week is also Holy Week. It starts this Sunday, as I mentioned, with Palm Sunday. And we'll, we'll celebrate that in all three of our worship services. Very special worship planned for Sunday. So, if you're part of Christ Church, be sure and, and be with us. And then on Thursday night, we have what is called in Latin, it's Monday Thursday, but it just means Holy Thursday. And one of the key parts of, of Thursday night service is Holy Communion. It was on a Thursday night that Jesus ate that last Passover meal with his apostles and instituted our, uh, what we think of as the Eucharist or the Last Supper, Holy Communion. So, we'll celebrate that. It's at 7:00. And the next night on Good Friday, we have an awesome service planned for 7:00. There'll be uh, lots of instruments with the music. There'll be beautiful parts by choir, some narration. Nathan will have a message. And as a matter of fact, I'm doing the narration this year. So, looking forward to that beautiful Good Friday service. And then um, on Easter, uh, we're gonna have a 7:00 Easter sunrise service. Uh, I am preaching that. Uh, you know, Nathan, uh, 7:00, he said, sure, you can take that one, David. Uh, but uh, seriously, I'm honored to be doing that service. We will be doing it live and livestreamed. And it'll be out on the church lawn, right in front of the, uh, right in front of the entrance that goes in toward the commons. And uh, if it were to rain or the weather's bad Sunday morning at 7:00, of course, we'll do it in the, inside, probably in the commons, but hopefully, we'll get to do it outside Willie Kitchens and, and uh, uh, Alex Ford and John are gonna be doing the music. So, that part will be beautiful. And then we have uh, 9:30 and 2:11:15 Easter services. All will be beautiful. And then Fun Day Sunday, coming up on the 24th, the Sunday after Easter, everything is on. Uh, we've got the pony rides and the petting zoo and uh, some inflatables. We've got putt-putt golf. It's gonna be a great, uh, it's gonna be a great Sunday for us. Beautiful worship. Music starts at 10:00. So, bring your camp chair or a blanket and get set up at 10:00. And then the worship will go from 10:30 to 11:30 with a free picnic lunch after that. So, Fun Day Sunday is always a great time. Invite someone. It's the, actually, we have more visitors, more families come on Fun Day Sunday than come at Easter or Christmas Eve. So, it's a wonderful time for us. I got a call just a couple of hours ago from a lady down near Ringgold. And she had received one of our direct mail pieces. I hope you all got a direct mail piece. Now, it's got Easter on the front with, it's like a paintbrush with four or five different colors. It's kinda colored that in. And she was calling to say, uh, I'm not Methodist. I'm in a church. She told me what church she was in, but she said, I love your all's direct mail pieces. And she wanted to know how we do those. It's great whenever people are complimentary like that. Uh, so, that's it. Those are the end of my commercials for this night. Oh, I should say, uh, we're finishing our Lenten Bible study tonight. We're coming right up to Jesus' time of the triumphal entry. We won't cover that tonight. You'll hear all about that this Sunday. And then we'll take next week off because of the Holy Week and particularly Holy Thursday service. But then the next week is April 21st and I'll be back with a new study. Uh, John and Mary Ellis suggested Matthew, and so I threw that out as an option. And so, we're gonna do that one. We'll do the Gospel of Matthew and it'll probably run six or eight weeks. So, be tuned in on that one, April 21st. And again, if you aren't on Facebook Live, you can catch that on their website as the, we'll archive it there soon after the class finishes. Uh, you may have noticed I have a different backdrop tonight because I'm not at home. I'm uh, I'm in Atlanta at our daughter Rachel's house. Uh, she and Gary live here in Decatur. And uh, I'm in her study. So, that's a good thing. I've spent the day with their little boys and had an awesome time. The only bad thing about it is Becky isn't here with me. She's at home. Talked to her just a little while ago and uh, haven't seen her tune in yet. But uh, hopefully, she's, she's gonna be, I know she can't wait to see this Bible study tonight. Even though she's not gonna get to read the Scripture, I'm gonna have to do that, do her part for her. Okay, let's get into our lesson. We're in Luke 17 and 18, the Scripture that leads right up to the triumphal entry and, and Holy Week. Last week, we studied chapters 15 and 16. It was a series of three parables. What was the theme of those three parables? There's a common element that runs in all three of those. One is about a sheep. One is about a coin. And another one is about a son. Anybody remember what those uh, we will be praying uh, for that prayer request that I just saw posted. Thank you. Anybody remember what the, sort of the theme of those three parables are? The sheep, the coin, and the, and the son. The parable of the, what's the word that kinda connects all three of those? It's almost like Jesus was trying to illustrate God's love for us and how God so reaches out. Yes, finding the lost. And He used those parables to teach us about God's love with the lost. Exactly. When something is valuable to us and we lose it, that becomes our total focus. It's almost like we forget about other things and we get so focused on finding that one thing. And Luke is telling us that's the way it is with God seeking after the sinner, the one who is lost. In chapter 16, Jesus told us about a rich man named Lazarus. What did we learn from that? What did we learn from the story of Lazarus and the rich man? Anybody remember? This, this, I'll sort of fill in the blanks while I'm waiting for your reply. Lazarus lay by the gate and begged, uh, the gate of this rich man who passed by him every day. Paid him very little attention. And uh, and, and so, they both die. And interestingly enough, the beggar is in heaven. He's with Abraham and, and those who are righteous. The rich man is in Hades. And uh, and, and the rich man calls out and says, hey, let Lazarus come and, and bring a coal cloth for me. And can't do that. Hell and Hades are way separated from heaven. And then he asked, well, send him back to earth so that he can mourn my brothers. Yes, Lazarus definitely was rewarded in heaven. And one of the key points there is we have this time on earth to seek God, to know God, to have a relationship with God. But when we die, it's, it's over. Uh, and, and some, someone's not gonna come back from the dead and tell us, uh, hey, you better, you better profess your faith in Christ. The uh, God said, you had your chance. Your brothers have their chance. Uh, we're not sending Lazarus back. They wouldn't listen even if we did. So, it's a, it's a reminder to us, we've just got this time. Let's make the best of it. Alright, I'm gonna read now Luke 17, 1 through 6. Jesus said this to His disciples, "Things that cause people to stumble are bound to come. But woe to anyone through whom they come. It would be better for them to be thrown into the sea with a millstone tied around their neck than to cause one of these little ones to stumble. So, watch yourselves. If your brother or sister sins against you, rebuke them. And if they repent, forgive them. If they sin against you seven times in a day and seven times come back to you saying, I repent, you must forgive them." The apostle said to the Lord, "Increase our faith." In other words, they hear that and they say, I couldn't do that, seven times in a single day. So, they say, "Increase our faith." He replied, "If you have faith as small as a mustard seed, you can say to this mulberry tree, 'Be uprooted and planted in the sea,' and it will obey you." Okay. Uh, Jesus is saying here, uh, it's, it's like He's focusing on His apostles. And uh, and they know that. The apostles say, "Increase our faith." They realize He's setting a high bar. And they don't yet uh, rise to the level that He would like them to be. None of us do. What do these opening verses say about causing someone to sin? Reflect on that. This is a key point to us that we have to be really, really careful not to do something that would cause another person to sin. When Jesus says, "These little ones," He may have been talking about children, but I think also He may have been referring to those who are kinda babes in the faith. Uh, people who have just come to know Him, uh, new disciples. And uh, they might easily be distracted. And so, He's saying, be really careful that we don't lead anyone astray. What might happen? Did you pick up on that? If uh, He uses a powerful analogy here that it would be so bad for you if you caused one of these immature Christians or a child, a youth to sin. It would be better for you if, if what? Do you, did you pick up on that? This is one of those Scriptures that remind me, okay, be careful what you do. What we do sometimes can cause someone to sin so easily. We, it's easier for us to say the right thing than it is for us to do the right thing. It says it'd be better for you to be thrown into the sea, exactly, Glory, with a millstone tied around your neck. A millstone was this huge round stone. Uh, would probably have weighed 1,200, 1,400 pounds. And it stood up and ran in a trench. It had a wooden axle for it. And so, this stone could be turned in a circle. And it was usually pulled by an ox or a donkey. So, it would, it would turn in this circle, round and around. And it was used as a mill because corn or barley would be, wheat would be thrown into the trench that it ran in, a stone trough, and that stone, millstone would grind the grain. It's a millstone. And if you were thrown into the sea and a millstone were tied around your neck, you would be gone. You would never be able to come back to the surface. Uh, you would, you would be gone. And, and so, it says, uh, it'd be better for that to happen to you than to cause someone to sin. We were in, uh, I think it was a worship meeting this week and Olivia, we were complimenting how the little kids did so beautifully as they sang. And, and Olivia had all kinds of motions from Tadu as she sang. Uh, somebody else was doing the motions in front of them and Olivia was directing them. And at one point, uh, at one point, uh, she said she saw one of the children doing this. Well, what that child was doing was mimicking her. That child had heard her say over and over, "Do the hand motions, do the motions that we show you." And she, instead of watching the person that was doing the motions for them, she was watching Olivia. And so, this child was directing, uh, right back at Olivia, the director. And I said, you know, that's just a reminder, be careful what we do. I mean, that was a beautiful thing to do. But children watch us and then they mimic us. They do what adults do. And uh, Christie makes a point there that be careful what, uh, what we uh, don't consider sin that others may. So, we may be doing something and someone sees that and thinks it's a sin and we're doing it. And so, then they say, well, it's okay. Paul talked about that with eating meat sacrificed to idols, didn't he? And said, well, hey, if that's, if that's gonna cause somebody a spiritual issue, even though it's, it's okay, there's, the idol doesn't exist, I won't eat the meat. I'm, it's that important that I not cause someone to sin. Jesus says, He says, "One of our, our, one of our brother sins, uh, we should rebuke them." In other words, we see someone doing something that they shouldn't do, we, we correct them. We tell them, you shouldn't do that. But then if they come seven times in a day and say, I am so sorry, would you please forgive me? Forgive them seven times. I might do that the first time. I might possibly do it the second. But I'm like the apostle saying, "Oh, man, increase my faith." Seven times? That's so hard. Another Scripture, uh, I think it's in Matthew where, uh, where Jesus says, if someone sins, Peter says, uh, how many times should we forgive someone? Should we forgive them seven times? And you may recall Jesus saying, not just seven, but 70 times seven. And He didn't mean exactly 490 times. He meant, there's no limit. Forgive others. We're asking in the Lord's Prayer, "Forgive me of my trespasses like I forgive those who trespass against me." We wanna be forgiven. We have to be forgiving. It's a key point. Jesus continues here to teach about forgiving people. I, I wonder if the apostles thought maybe they needed their faith increased for the right reasons? Or were they thinking, increase our faith so that we can, can uh, can do some things that'll draw attention to us? Let's read on and see, uh, 7 through 10. Jesus says, "Suppose if one of you has a servant." Now, I want you to put yourself in this situation. Suppose one of you has a servant plowing or looking after the sheep. Will he say to the servant, when he comes in from the field, "Come along now and sit down to eat"? Won't he rather say, "Prepare my supper. Get yourself ready and wait on me while I eat and drink." After that, you may eat and drink. Will he thank the servant because he did what he was told to do? So, you also, when you have done everything you were told to do, should say, "We are unworthy servants. We have only done our duty." This is one of those passages that I, I think maybe the apostles, by Jesus telling this, using this illustration immediately after that, uh, that last lesson. And they said, "Increase our faith." It makes me think maybe Jesus thought they wanted their faith increased for the wrong reasons. And He's saying, uh, don't, don't expect thanks. Um, let me ask you, when the servant finishes plowing and watching the sheep, what does that servant get to do at the end of the day? Now, think about that. The servant has been out working hard all day long. In their culture, it was more than eight hours. It would've been sunup to sundown, more like 12 hours. And then when this servant comes in, what does the servant get to do? Bothers me just a little bit. I like to see gratitude. And uh, I think it would be nice if the master did say, "Hey, it's uh, it's uh, it's, it's been nice. Why don't you go ahead and, and go to bed?" But instead, he, he cooks for the master. He prepares the food. He serves the food. And then finally, the servant gets to eat. And Jesus is using that to say, "That's the way it should be with us. You know, we do our work as servants. We don't do that so that we can uh, get rewarded for it. We do that because it's what is asked of us. It's just what we do. It's what servants, followers of Christ, uh, do, expecting no attention, no place at the table, not even any thanks." We are to go about serving as Christ followers. 11 through 19. I noticed this on the, uh, here for the first time. "Now, on his way to Jerusalem, Jesus traveled along the border between Samaria and Galilee. As he was going into a village, ten men who had leprosy met him. They stood at a distance and called out in a loud, loud voice, 'Jesus, master, have pity on us.' When he saw them, he said, 'Go, show yourselves to the priest.'" "And they went. As they went, they were cleansed." The reason for sending them to the priest was because the priest would look at them, examine their skin, and declare them clean. And now, they can be back into society. The priest had nothing to do with their cleansing, their healing. Jesus has done that. "One of them, when he came was healed, when he saw he was healed, came back, praising God in a loud voice. He threw himself at Jesus' feet and thanked him. And he was a Samaritan." Now, they're on the border between Galilee and Samaria. "Jesus asked, 'Were not all ten cleansed? Where are the other nine? Has no one returned to praise God except this foreigner?' Then he said to him, 'Rise and go. Your faith has made you well.'" Here's something I noticed. It tells us in verse 1, not verse 1, verse 11, that uh, Jesus is on his way to Jerusalem. We knew that. But now, it tells us He's on the border between Galilee and Samaria. Folks, He's already been down to Bethany. Uh, we read about Him at the home of Martha and Mary. They live in Bethany. And Bethany is way down uh, in Judea. There's another place. We're gonna read here toward the end of tonight about Jesus coming to Jericho. All this does is it reminds me that, that Luke is not telling this. He is not telling all this in a chronological way. In other words, He started on his way, probably from Mount Hermon, where the, where the Transfiguration took place, on his way to Jerusalem. That's Galilea's up north. He goes south into Samaria and then south out of Samaria into Judea. Sometimes people went over the, across the Jordan and back down to Judea. But He's already been down south, uh, in, in between where we started reading in tonight. And now, He's back up at the border between Galilee and Samaria. And I will admit, I'm probably the only one who cares about that. But it's a, it's, Luke is usually so orderly in the way He tells things. And this is obviously a place where He's told us something that happened later on this journey before He told us about this. Let's, let's continue reading. I'm gonna pick back up at verse 20. We'll read less of verse 8, of chapter 18 tonight, but there's a lot in 17 that I wanna read together. I'm gonna read 20 through 25 here. "Once on being asked by the Pharisees when the kingdom of God would come, Jesus replied, 'The coming of the kingdom of God is not something that can be observed, nor will people say, 'Here it is,' or, 'There it is,' because the kingdom of God is in your midst.'" What does He mean by that? I'm gonna keep reading. If you would, tell me what He means by, "The kingdom of God is not something you will see happen. It is in your midst." "Then he said to his disciples, 'The time is coming when you will long to see one of the days of the Son of Man, but you will not see it. People will tell you, 'There he is,' or, 'Here he is.' Do not go running off after them. For the Son of Man in his day will be like the lightning, which flashes and lights up the sky from one end to the other. But first, he must suffer many things and be rejected by this generation.'" So, what does He mean when He says, "The kingdom of God is in your midst"? When we pray the Lord's Prayer, we say, "Your or thy kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Okay. Greg says, "It's already here. The kingdom grows in those who believe and share the Word." Absolutely. Uh, Jesus came bringing the kingdom of God. Jesus was there. He was among them. And as we accept that and live that, it's within us. It's all around us. It, yes, thank you. You all, you all have it. It's uh, the kingdom of God comes on earth whenever we live out that kingdom, a spiritual kingdom, not a political or earthly kingdom. Jesus is going to, uh, in just a few days, He's gonna stand before Pilate. And Pilate will say, "Are you really a king?" And Jesus will say, well, "Is that something you came up with or did you hear it from someone else?" And when Pilate persists, Jesus will say, "My kingdom is not of this world." And so, He's not denying that He's the king, but He's making it clear that it's this kind of kingdom that we're, we're talking about here. It, it's interesting that my translation in NIV says, "It's in your midst." Uh, some translations say it's among you. Some say, "Within," the Greek word there. Uh, it is a good translation. It's, "The kingdom of God is within you." Jesus says, "You're gonna long for my return, but first, I have to suffer here on earth." Uh, He's predicting what's gonna happen to Him. He says, "Whenever He does come back, it'll be so obvious that we won't have to wonder and guess." Then in verses 26 through 37, Jesus shares some other things about the Second Coming. For example, uh, and I know you, I didn't read that, but scan through that and tell me, whenever Jesus comes back, what are people going to be doing? What will they be doing when the Second Coming happens? Does it say that we'll all be gathered on uh, on Mount Zion, looking up to the sky and waiting for His return? Or that we'll be at the Vatican, uh, all standing before St. Peter's Basilica and waiting? Does it mean we'll all be in a church building? No, that's not at all what He's saying. What will we be doing? We'll be doing regular stuff in life, won't we? We'll be eating and drinking and, and going to weddings, have, getting married, being given in marriage. Uh, He says, "That's the way it was with uh, that's the way it was with Noah. That's the way it was," yes, daily life, exactly. Um, living life as usual. Thanks, Nikki. That's exactly right. Things will be going on. We'll be living our normal lives, going to work, uh, going to school, all the things that we do. And boom. He says, uh, "In the days of Lot, people were eating and drinking, buying and selling, planting and building. Uh, and then it happened. It'll be just like that when the Son of Man is revealed," he says. And then He goes on to say, uh, "Some will be uh, in bed together. One will be taken and the other won't. Uh, some will be in the field together. Two will be, two will be in the field. Uh, no one should go back if they're in the field. Uh, two people be in one bed. One will be taken. Two women will be grinding grain together. One will be taken and the other left." It's from some of this imagery that we get the Left Behind series. Uh, that's taking this too literally. Yes, two will be doing something. One will be taken and the other one won't. But particularly when it says, two will be in bed together, one taken and the other one not. I think what this is saying is there's no uh, it's not like the family has to, you know how we're sometimes, not we, of course, but some people would, uh, would drink and so, they don't wanna drive while they're drinking. So, they have a designated driver. You know, this person is gonna be the, the one who is sober and able to drive safely. It's not like a family can say, okay, we need a designated believer. So, okay, Chris- So, okay, Christie, you're the designated believer. The rest of us can just go on being sinful as we want to. We don't have to believe or have faith because Christie's got the faith and that'll save the rest of us. No, this is saying, the one who is a believer has faith will be taken and the rest of us will be left. So in the same family, people working together, people with a lot in common, good friends, one taken and another one not. In other words, we all have to answer for ourselves. We all have to be individually accountable. Let me, let me jump ahead here just a little bit. Well, no, I'm not jumping. Let's go to eighteen, I'm going to read one through eight. Then Jesus told his disciples a parable to show them that they should always pray and not give up. Remember that meaning, because we read this stuff and we say, really? That doesn't sound like God, or that doesn't sound, he's teaching us a lesson. And he's already, Luke's told us what he's teaching. He's teaching us to be faithful in our prayer. Don't give up. He said, in a certain town, there was a judge who neither feared God nor cared what people thought. And there was a widow in that town who kept coming to him with the plea, grant me justice against my adversary. For some time he refused, but finally he said to himself, even though I don't fear God or care what people think, yet because this widow keeps bothering me, I will see that she gets justice, so that she won't eventually come and attack me. And the Lord said, Christ said, listen to what the unjust God says. And will not God bring about justice for his chosen ones who cry out to him night and day? Will he? Excuse me. Will he keep putting them off? I tell you, he will see that they get justice and quickly. However, when the Son of Man comes, will he find faith on the earth? He's not saying God's like that justice or that judge. He wasn't a, really a just person. He was probably waiting for that widow to grease his palms a little bit. But she kept at it. She kept coming, saying, I need you to hear my case, I need you to hear my case. And because she was faithful, we would say determined, stubborn, she just kept coming. He, he relented. God is not, God is not hard-hearted. We don't have to browbeat God, but the lesson from that Luke is telling us is be faithful. It's keep praying. Keep praying and God will hear us, God will respond and answer. Want you to, want you to tell me who the Pharisee compares himself to in this next parable? To some who were confident of their own righteousness and looked down on everyone else, Jesus told this parable. Two men went up to the temple to pray, one a Pharisee and the other a tax collector. The Pharisee stood by himself and prayed, God, I thank you that I'm not like other people, robbers, evildoers, adulterers, or even like this tax collector. I fast twice a week and give a tenth of all I get. But the tax collector stood at a distance. He would not even look up to heaven, but beat his breast and said, God have mercy on me, a sinner. And Jesus said, I tell you that this man, rather than the other, went home justified before God. For all those who exalt themselves will be humbled, and those who humble themselves will be exalted. So who is the Pharisee comparing himself to? You know, this Pharisee stood at the temple, praying to God and saying, I am so glad, you've probably noticed, God, I'm not like what? Who? Other people, right? This Pharisee is comparing himself to other people, including the tax collector. I'm so glad, God, and I know you're proud of me for not being like this tax collector, who is a sinner. Instead, I, I give, give a tenth of all I have. Yes. He's comparing himself to other people, and it's a wonderful reminder to us not to do that. We, we are not to compare ourselves with others. We are to compare ourselves with, with what Christ expects of us, to model ourselves after him. I love studying Dr. William Barclay's commentaries. I've used those for years. He tells a, he tells a story. Dr. Barclay is, is from Scotland. And he talked about riding a train from up in Scotland down through Yorkshire and into London. And when he went through the Yorkshire Dales, it was really early spring, probably about this time, maybe a little earlier. He says, the grass was just beautiful and green. It had just come out. And he noticed a, a little, a little cottage that had just been whitewashed. And he said, it just looks so beautiful and white against the green grass. He rode the train down to London, did his work there. And three or four days later, he rode the train back north. And as he was going through that same area in Yorkshire, he was surprised to see that a late snow had fallen. And he says, the ground was just absolutely covered with this beautiful white, pure snow. And he said, I was shocked when I came to that little cottage that I thought looked so white compared to the green grass and saw that sitting in that beautiful white, pure snow, it looked so dingy. Wasn't really white at all. And Dr. Barclay was talking about this very thing. Don't compare yourself with other people. Don't compare yourself with people who sin. And you say, well, I don't sin as much as them. Compare yourself to Christ and the example that Christ lifts up. I'll finish that little story about Barclay. Our daughter Rachel was at Oxford a few years ago getting her masters. Becky and I went to visit her and we decided to take the train from Oxford, which is sort of middle part of the country, up north through the Yorkshire area and into Edinburgh, Scotland. I thought about that story that Dr. Barclay had told about the cottage. And I kept looking at these cottages in the beautiful green grass. It was a little later in the year when we went, but in the beautiful green grass, wondering, wonder if it was this cottage or that cottage. I opened that Barclay commentary. I had it with me. I was studying to teach a Sunday School class I was teaching. Then I opened that commentary and there was that story. Now what's the odds of that? I'd read that story before, but opening that commentary on the Gospel of Luke, there was Dr. Barclay's story about going through the Yorkshire area. I felt so close to him and that story. But the, the, the truth there is just timeless. We, we can always find someone that we point to like the Pharisee did and say, I'm not a sinner like that. That's not the test. The test is, do we live according to what Christ expects of us? Little, little children were brought to Jesus by the parents and the apostles fussed at them. You remember, of course, what Jesus said, let the little children come to me. Don't hinder them, to such belong the kingdom of heaven. What he was saying is, when you come to me, come like little children, inquisitive, curious, innocent, assuming innocence, having faith, trusting. These are characteristics that children have that we are to have. A rich ruler came to Jesus and said, what do I need to do to receive eternal life? And, and Jesus said, well, follow the commandments. And he goes, I've done that. You know, Jesus names off the commandments. And he goes, I've done that. And then Jesus looked at him, knowing him very well, and said, well, sell everything that you have, give it to the poor, have treasure in heaven, then come follow me. And the man became very sad because it says he was very wealthy. And as he walked away, Jesus said, it's easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for a wealthy person to go to heaven. That scripture so bothers me because by the world's standards, we, I am pretty wealthy. And Jesus is saying, if we're not careful, if we have material means, we tend to put our trust in that rather than following him fully. He goes on to say, whatever is possible with man, impossible with man is possible with God. So Peter says, we've left everything to follow you, reminding Jesus that they had sacrificed. And Jesus says, that whatever they have, whatever they've given up, they'll receive many, many times over for following him. Remember that, we never sacrifice in following Christ. We don't gain more than we, than we give up. I want to, I want to read thirty-one on here. Jesus took the twelve. Now you've got all these disciples around him. He took the twelve aside. And he says, we're going up to Jerusalem, this, we're coming to the end of our study. And everything that is written by the prophets about the Son of Man will be fulfilled. Now he's saying, I'm the Son of Man, okay? He's no longer saying, don't tell anybody, they should get it, they're not going to get it. He will be delivered over to the Gentiles, the Romans. They will mock him, insult him and spit on him. They'll flog him and kill him. On the third day, he will rise again. The disciples did not understand any of this. Its meaning was hidden from them and they did not know what he was talking about. They had to be sad for Jesus telling them, this is the third time he's told them. The details about what's going to happen to him and they're not getting it. It will take the crucifixion itself for them to grasp it. We're coming to that time in our, in our worship, in our time of the Christian year. As they approached Jericho, there's that part I mentioned earlier. They've been to Bethany, which is further on the journey to Jericho. Then they've been back at the, the border with Galilee and, and Samaria. Now they're coming into Jericho. But this is, this is just outside, it's across the Jordan River and in Judea, just outside Jerusalem. A blind man was sitting by the roadside begging. When he heard the crowd going by, he asked what was happening. And they told him, Jesus of Nazareth is passing by. He kept calling out. And Jesus asked what he wanted, and he said he wanted to see. And Jesus said, receive your sight. Your faith has healed you. Immediately he received his sight and followed Jesus praising God. When all the people saw it, they praised God. There's irony in what Luke just told us. The apostles have been with him for three years. He's given them spiritual truth and they can't see, they're blind spiritually. And yet this blind man has received his sight. Luke is wanting us to see a contrast between a blind man who now can see and the apostles who are kind of blind. We won't read it, but at the beginning of nineteen, Jesus encounters Zacchaeus, this little tax collector who, there in Jericho, a group of us from Christ Church went to Palestine and did a pilgrimage last, two years ago in February. And when we went to, to Jericho, all of us, of course, we, we talked about Zacchaeus. Where's that sycamore tree? Zacchaeus was invited by Jesus, come down, I'm going to your house today. He accepted Christ. The sinner became a, a follower and promised to give back, I think it was double anything. No, I'm sorry, four times. I'll give half my possessions to the poor, and if I've cheated anybody, I'll pay back four times the amount. And Jesus said, salvation has come to this house. If we were to move ahead in chapter nineteen, we would come to verse twenty-eight. After Jesus had said this, he went on ahead, going up to Jerusalem. And it says, he came to a hill called the Mount of Olives. And it's there that he would send his apostles, go into town, bring this donkey. And that's the way he's going to write into Jerusalem. If you're in church this Sunday on Palm Sunday, you're going to hear all about that, that write into Jerusalem. We're going to see children come parading into the sanctuary and the commons as we sing. And, and they'll be waving those palm branches as we declare Jesus as the King, much as the crowd did. And so I don't, I don't need to cover that scripture. I will remind you of what I said. Some of you may not have been on at the very beginning when I said, we'll take a break next week. That's, next Thursday will be Monday or Holy Thursday. I definitely will be at church and, and helping to lead that worship service. Hope you'll be there or, or watching online. And then the next week, on, on the next Thursday, we'll start our study of Matthew. And I'll do an introduction and maybe the first two chapters. If you would, go ahead and read chapters one and two, and that's two weeks away. Hope you can be with us. I've enjoyed doing this Lenten Bible study, this journey to Jerusalem. And, and we are, we are right there. Jesus is, Jesus is prepared now to ride that donkey and to, and to go into Jerusalem on a triumphal entry. Well, God bless you all. Have a good night and hope to see you very soon.